...Board of Education, June tenth, twenty nineteen, meeting to order at seven o'clock P M. Members President David, John, Jennifer, Kenny, and Susie. It's time to move on to approval events from the May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, meeting on pages one through nine.
...three minutes.
Okay. Question mark by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the minutes from the May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes.
That's done.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to approve eleven conferences.
Should look at five thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are all supplies for summer school. Seventeen as well is a trip for summer school. Hotel reimbursements, five twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, that was for the professional development that goes along with summer school. Five twenty-five was for a laptop and screens of upgrade in technology for the central office. Five twenty-six. Oh, oh, if you'll notice the new chairs in the boardroom. The, uh, the ugly green ones had eaten me away for four years. And so we, uh, went ahead and updated and upgraded those chairs so that they all matched. And to this point, none of them has stained ones, so we're very, very proud of those. Five twenty-nine is classroom supplies for Tracy Hirsch, that's four twelve money. Five thirty, Dennis Wright's lodging, he's at a transportation inspection class. So as now, all three of our guys that work out of the bus bar are also certified to do bus inspections. So that gives us, uh, we, we know that people that are looking at the buses and everything are trained to really do the best job. And, uh, five thirty-five and thirty-six, um, those were summer school trips. We were required to take some summer school trips. And we had initially planned on going to the Batfish, which was free of charge. The Gathering Place, which was free of charge, and the Spyro Mounts, which was free of charge. All three of which were closed because of the flood. So, uh, the, the effects of that never seemed to end, but, uh, we did manage to get the kids into the, to that. And we've got some summer payroll on the next page. On the building fund page, Arvo Enterprise, we're doing, it was, it's been several years since we've done a complete refinish of our gymnasial floor. So there will be new graphics and everything. We usually just sand down the top and refinish. And, uh, we tried to do this last year and we just couldn't make the scheduling work. So, uh, we, uh, we got two bids, but the, uh, the other company that we went, that we considered, they did the refinishing last year and we really weren't pleased with the refinishing. They, they came back three different times and they never got the budgets out. Arvo is, probably does more than anyone in the state of Oklahoma, and they'll get it done before school starts. And then the, uh, sound panels, uh, we're trying to redo the walls in the, uh, high school auditorium. I don't know if y'all have looked at them or not, but they look really bad. And so we're in the process of helping the acoustics in there as well as, uh, updating and upgrading our high school auditorium. Any questions there?
Make a motion through the encumbrances. Second.
Question mark by David, seconded by John, to approve the encumbrances as listed. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to other financial reports, pages ten through twenty-eight.
You can see on the gas lane report, uh, Mr. Stamper pulling that big truck on the way to Washington, D.C., went through a few gallons of gas. But, uh, we were, they had a great trip and everything came, everyone made it back safe and sound with no issues. And we're very proud of our, of our band. On the financial end, uh, we started the month with two million eight hundred thirty-six thousand twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Uh, we brought in eight hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, brought us to a total, uh, cash available of three million seven hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy cents. We had warrants of one million eight hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. When you do that summer payroll with those all three checks, it just balloons in a hurry. So, uh, we had an ending balance of one million eight hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Uh, outstanding warrants of three hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Leaving us with one million five hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. Going over to the building fund, you can again see that we've, uh, even with the, uh, two encumbrances that we talked about earlier, our building fund, uh, has done very, very well this year. And we've, uh, been able to build it back up to the, the point which we were, uh, trying to do at the end of the year. And child nutrition has, uh, dipped a little bit. Still don't have, still have trouble getting some collections on that. We're working on it, but, uh, at the same time, we've not gone to alternative meals or anything to draw attention to those students who, uh, are not able to pay. And so, uh, as long as we can keep, keep paying the bills and, uh, all, all those things, and I think we're, uh, we're still doing a good job in child nutrition. Any questions there? I do want to, uh, general fund expenditures, again, payroll is really, really big this month. And also you might look at our bills for, uh, this month compared to the last month or the same month last year. We've, uh, we've paid a lot more. And you'll, you'll see that our cash forward at this time is down two hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. But I don't... But if you look at the bottom of this screen, uh, there's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and some change that we pay, that we had not paid last year that we've already gone ahead and paid. I've tried to get everything paid down with, with me leaving and everything, trying to get everything paid in advance. Uh, also, last year, we had received our sixty-eight thousand dollars for summer school at this time. We have not received that yet. The Choctaws are good for it, I have no doubt about that. So you just throw those three items in there, not including, uh, we recently filed a lot of claims on federal programs. So we're still going, uh, all of our projections already end up, at least where we started the year, probably above where we started the year. Yes, sir, come on in.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Bye.
See you.
You're always welcome at board meetings, just so you know, okay. What in the world do I do there? Like I said, this is, this is a time thing, it's not a money thing. We're still, as I said, projected to finish the year where we started or in better shape. So, uh, any questions on any of that?
Okay, this time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point to regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. B, other comments in accordance with policy B E D dash R, no one present for that. Um, move on to information items, superintendents reports.
I just wanted to discuss a couple of things that we're working on. Again, kind of like the chairs, uh, this is the start of our problem at the high school parking lot. And, uh, I've, I've gotten one bid on that, we could not get the second bid, uh, third. And what we're gonna do is first, before we start working on the parking lot, is we're gonna come over here and build a place for our dumpsters so that the trash trucks don't have to get on our parking lot. Uh, we don't know how much they weigh, I'm sure they weigh a whole lot more on rainy days than they do on dry days. And so our first, uh, first thing we're gonna do, and like I said, I haven't gotten a second bid yet, but the two projects that I'm gonna talk about, you can add them together and they're less than ten thousand dollars already, so. But I did want to, we're, we're gonna to come over there, build a place for our dumpsters where we can put a fence around them and keep them hidden, and the trash trucks will never have to pull on our parking lot. And then we can, uh, that'll be phase one, and then we can come, and we'll also run a much longer tin horn to make sure that we're getting the proper driveway down the hill. Second thing is, this is on the south side of the football field. And we're going to, uh, put a tin horn and a gate and a drive-through there. And, uh, this was another one of Peabo's good ideas, is if we can park the ambulance and the fire truck there during football games, then if they have to leave, we don't have to worry about them accidentally backing over a student or something, because when they park on the other side, between the home side and the concession stand, there's a lot of people, it's a very congested area. And this way they can park and they can come and go without us having to, uh, worry about any traffic flow from, uh, participants or spectators at the games. So, uh, there'll be a tin horn and, and it will be, uh, concrete. And so that's kind of what we're looking at, we'll put, uh, two nice gates up. And it'll make it a much safer situation and, and hopefully, we, we appreciate the ambulance showing up all the time. It's, I always feel better when they're there, but sometimes they do have to leave in the middle of the game. And it will make that look much more accessible. So, any questions on that? As far as items for information, I just tell you all, I appreciate you all and, uh, thanks for everything. And we're just, uh, you have a good person hired, so, uh, things are good, things are very good. No, and these projects here, they will not be completed, I think, this month, right?
Yes.
They will be completed?
Yes.
I'm, when you said you had to get another bid or something, and I'm wondering about on that one, if you have time to shift it over? No, we're gonna get it done. Hopefully we can get it done. The, the first, the first bid came in at a price that we can, we can move on. Uh, you know, if other person doesn't want to get, I tried to have them both by the night and just couldn't get that second bid. But no, it's, it's ready to go. It's ready to go.
Alrighty, pretty good. This time we move on to action topics. Action topic, A, consideration of second semester attendance waivers, pages twenty-nine to thirty-one.
Again, uh, Mr. Borg and Mr. Stapp did a good job working with parents and students. And just one caution to you that, not to mention any names because that would be confidential, but if you have any questions, uh, we can always do that. But, uh, they do a great job working with the parents and the students to give credit any time they can. And I am more than convinced, anyone that is not receiving credit, uh, there is a legitimate reason that that's the recommendation of that committee.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Question mark by John, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the, the second semester attendance waivers. Uh, John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Action topic B, consideration of workers' compensation insurance for the nineteen twenty school year, pages thirty-two through thirty-four.
Again, we've been with O S A G for a long time and, uh,
They gone up or any?
No, it's gone down actually, uh, but we did have to file a claim this month. We glad we got this in before we got all that filed, so it may act, it may go up a little next year. But they've been very good with us. And, uh, like I said, um, it's a, they're a solid company that really helps, works with schools specifically. And, um, we get a member dividend as well as being able to get the, the discount as well. But I can't promise you that for next year. But I would definitely recommend staying with Oklahoma School Insurance Group.
Make a motion to O S A G for workers' compensation insurance. I'll say.
Question mark by Kenny, seconded by David, to stay with O S A G for workers' compensation insurance for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of property liability transportation insurance for the nineteen twenty school year.
I'm sorry, I did not have copies for you all. Um, I just got the quote in right before we started. Again, it's this year is the same as last year. We have two companies that quote, uh, the Oklahoma Schools Insurance Group or O S I G. And their agent is Bill Cox from here in Stigler. And, um, their quote is for one hundred thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Our current carrier is, uh, Jordan Barnett Agency with Oklahoma School Risk Management Trust. And this is the fourth or fifth year we've been with them, maybe the fifth year we've been with them. Their quote is for one hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
One twenty-two, three?
One twenty-two, three twenty-seven. And again, just as last year, the significant differences in these two policies are number one, roof replacement. Any roof that's over fifteen years old, O S I G will replace at actual cash value. O Smart will replace at cost of replacement. So when you look at the size of buildings we have, the number of roofs that we have, uh, that's a significant difference. So if you look at, take the elementary school roof, for example. We know we've got seventeen thousand square foot of roof there. At replacement cost or actual cash value, it can, it can go either way. The other thing is, um, the comprehensive liability insurance, which is what covers the, uh, board, for O Smart, it's two million dollars, for O S I G, it's one million dollars. Those are the... The deductible on flood is, uh, five thousand with O Smart, fifty thousand with O S I G. I don't see that as being a real decision-maker either way for us. But...
We went with O Smart last year, right?
Yes.
It was the same thing, wasn't it?
It was the same thing.
Wasn't different that much?
Oh, it was about ten thousand.
It was like twenty-two thousand.
Do we have any claims or anything like that?
We did not. It's been a good year.
Well, this is really flipped, because years ago, O Smart was always cheaper.
It adds it. Like I said, the only deer, the only, if you went five years without a significant roof claim, it would probably even out. One big roof claim, I think you would eat up that twenty-two thousand quickly.
That's... They'll do, what'd you say percentage was on the fifteen-year?
A fifteen-year, O S I G will do actual cash value.
Oh, our roofs are older than fifteen, aren't they?
Except the new one we put on the middle school cafeteria. O Smart will just do total replacement.
Oh, let's say their actual cash value.
Yeah, I don't know. They appreciate this probably, so I always wish something like that.
Appreciate a year nineteen forty-two, no, it's not, it's not that old. It's not that old. It's not that old. But, uh, like I said, it's, uh, I guess that's what insurance is, or risk assessment, that's what we have to do on this deal is, uh,
If you advocate your apples not to...
Way of the odds, it is. But they would, now, O S I G will not attach a rider so that you can compare apples, that's not an option. I'm asked.
I don't care, keep the same, twenty-two thousand dollars is quite a bit of money. If we have one tornado, I mean, one big hailstorm or something, then we have every roof in the whole district gone.
It's...
Now we're talking.
We got more longer twenty...
Hundred dollars.
You're, you are, you are, that's...
Say five years, you get another hundred grand, you know, if you...
Well, at this pace, next year maybe, last year was ten, this year's twenty-two.
Yeah, if it goes up any more, I'm gonna say now we, you know, I'm...
Especially if we don't have compliance.
Yeah. Either way, if it goes up any more than that, I think we have... And I don't know that we shouldn't have.
How many, how many years more do we have to save? Just one?
O Smart.
I mean, O Smart?
This is fifth year.
At, at least a fifth year.
I believe Bill Cox fifth year, so we gotta do it too.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Well, you wanna go with O S I G, what do you think? It's a game along, sure.
I know what I do, I'm like, uh, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, because you could end up with, like I said, a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars in a hurry, you know?
I'll make a motion to go with O S I G for insurance, for our property liability.
O Smart? Okay. Question mark by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, uh, to, uh, go with O Smart for our property liability transportation insurance for the nineteen twenty school year. Um, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of renewing our membership with Oklahoma O S S B A for the nineteen twenty school year, pages thirty-five and thirty-eight.
I would assume you're... Make a motion to renew our membership with O S S B A.
I'll say that.
John?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Question mark by, no, seconded by David, to renew our membership with O S S B A for the nineteen twenty school year. Nine hundred twenty-six hundred dollars here. Uh, John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of renewing our policy maintenance service subscription with the O S S B A for the nineteen twenty school year, pages thirty-nine to thirty-one, forty-one.
I like this, as opposed to have the following attorney get a sample and, uh, I think it costs a little more than just, uh, calling O S S B A and saying, "We'd like some examples of a particular policy." You're limited to twelve, but I would be surprised if you'd make more than twelve policy changes in one year. And some, but the way it is where there's not an additional charge, you may just want to compare your policy to an updated policy. Yes, we have. And so it, uh, I, I like the service.
Make a motion to renew our policy maintenance service agreement with O S S B A for the nineteen twenty school year.
Second. Question mark by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to renew our policy maintenance service subscription with O S S B A for the nineteen twenty school year. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, consideration of renewing our membership in the organization of rural Oklahoma School Association for nineteen twenty school year, pages forty-two through forty-three.
O R O S is a very, uh, reasonable expense as far as what they charge a year, six hundred dollars. And, uh, when it comes to the organization that will be in Oklahoma City fighting specifically for rural schools, they are the one. K O S A, uh, K O S A represents, uh, large and small, O S S B A represents large and small. And then their conference that they put on in October, it's a good time, uh, the start of the school year, as you're moving forward. And it'll, they do, uh, it's probably one of the most useful conferences that you can go to as well.
O R O S puts that on?
Yes. Not, not the O S S B A, they put one on just for administrators.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion to renew our membership with O R O S for the nineteen twenty school year. Second.
Question mark by John, seconded by David, to renew our membership in the O R S Association for the nineteen twenty school year. Uh, John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of renewing our membership in the Oklahoma Technology Administration, Administrators Association for the nineteen twenty school year, page forty-four.
This again goes hand in hand with our project leadway and our, uh, what we do with career tech and in our technology class, it's a, a very nominal amount for, for a lot of people. But as far as being represented at the Capitol as well as, uh, with other legislators and professionals though.
Make a motion to renew our membership with Oklahoma Technology Administrators Association for the nineteen twenty school year.
Question mark by David, seconded by Jennifer, to renew our membership with Oklahoma Technology Administrators Association for the nineteen twenty school year. Uh, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Action topic H, consideration of renewing gas sale and transportation agreement with Centerpoint Energy Services Retail L L C for the nineteen twenty school year, pages five to forty-six.
If you remember, if you don't, it's okay, I have to look every year. We get our high school, the high school gym and the middle school P E building, uh, they all come, their gas is provided straight from Centerpoint. And you can see that there were two months that the rate was actually higher with Centerpoint, but throughout the course of the year, uh, they saved us two thousand two hundred eighteen dollars and sixteen cents with, uh, in savings and purchasing our gas rate.
That's still Centerpoint. They changed all the fields up to name.
Yeah, this is probably the fourth time it's changed since I've been here.
Name was the same.
I've never gone to the golf tournament in Oklahoma City, which, I mean, in Kansas City, which they've invited me to every year. I just want to go on record, I just want to go on record there.
Make a motion to renew our gas sale transportation agreement. Second.
Question mark by Kenny, seconded by David, to, uh, renew the gas sale and transportation agreement with Centerpoint Energy Services Retail L L C for nineteen twenty school year. Kenny? David?
That was John.
John, I'm sorry. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of bids for hanging at the Connerland for the nineteen twenty school year.
Had two this year.
Do you know?
Got a bid from Mark Robin Park for five hundred dollars. He has been doing it the last three years that I know of. And then another bid uh, from Cotton and Brian Snow, would like to place a bid of five hundred and two dollars. We serviced her for three years.
Make a motion to go with the high bid. Second.
Five oh two?
Yes.
Motion made by John, second by David, to accept the high bid of five oh two, um, five hundred and two dollars for the hang at Connerland for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of the following E-rate policies, except number one, acceptable computer network, internet web usage policy, pages forty-seven through fifty-nine. And number two, E-rate record retention and procurement policy, page sixty.
There are no changes from the previous year in any of these policies. They're the same as they were last year.
We accept the E-rate policies.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to accept the E-rate policies, number one and number two. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of open, of open transfers for, open transfers for the nineteen twenty school year, pages sixty-one.
These are, and open carries from year to year, so these are the new open transfers that have been applied for this year, they've been through, uh, the, uh, principals and, uh... Everyone is in agreement that we should accept these students. I will say that because we're numbers in special ed, that we're currently approving any special education transfer with this knowledge, it will make sure we've got enough room for all the kids that we already have.
Make a motion we approve the open transfers as listed for the nineteen twenty school year.
Motion made by John, second by Jennifer, to accept a list of open transfers for the nineteen twenty school year as listed. Uh, John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
Kenny? Yes. And Susie, yes. Action topic L, consideration of contract to provide alcohol and drug testing services for employees for nineteen twenty school year, pages sixty-three, sixty-two through sixty-four.
Okay, we've been using, uh, Alpha Drug Testing, the local drug testing company for our employees. They are, on this, in this particular instance, they're a little less expensive than Precision, and they've done a good job, we've had no problems with Alpha for drug testing our employees.
David, the student also?
No, Precision changed it, the student.
Is this separate bids?
Yes.
Make a motion we approve Alpha Drug Testing for employee testing. Second.
Motion made by John, second by David, to, uh, stay with, uh, Alpha Drug Testing for alcohol and drug testing services for employees for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
David? Yes. Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic N, consideration of contract to provide student extracurricular activity drug testing services for the nineteen twenty school year, pages sixty-five through sixty-eight.
This was the initial screening, Alpha's, uh, significantly more expensive than, uh, on the, uh... Precision's just a little less expensive throughout. And then we've been, how long has Precision been doing our student?
Since we started, I must say, five, six years.
Make a motion we approve Precision Drug Testing for the best part, page sixty-nine, seventy-one.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to, uh, to a contract with Precision to provide student extracurricular activity drug testing services for nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic N, consideration of bid for four-post lift, simple lift or bus barn, page sixty-nine, seventy-one.
Here's what we currently have, and, uh, again, I can't say enough about our, uh, the men that we have working in our bus maintenance and everything. Uh, but for what we're trying to do, uh, they just don't feel like this is safe to be, uh, lifting machine vehicles up on, they'd like to go to a four-post lift. Uh, we have two quotes, we have Lum Sales and Service out of Shady Point, and they'll also do the removal and the installation. Where we can just buy the, uh, lift from O'Reilly's, and we just went off Lum's number for removal and installation. Uh, so we know that we caused at least that. And then, uh, Lum Sales and Service, they just do this full-time, that, that's their job, and so we just felt better with them doing the installation as well. So, uh, I would certainly recommend one with the Lum's for the four-post lift for the bus barn.
Make a motion we go with Lum's for four-post vehicle lift or bus barn. Second.
Motion made by David, second by John, to go with Lum's for, uh, four-post vehicle lift for the bus barn. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic O, consideration of school advantage purchasing card for Adam Bochamp, student attendant for the nineteen twenty school year, page seventy-two.
Is the only addition we'll be making, and of course, you'll be getting my bags.
I was gonna say.
I asked him if I could take it with me, but he kind of nixed that idea.
First time we talk about it.
It is, sure. So, uh, we, we would like to go ahead and start moving forward with that, so be ready to go.
Make a motion we approve the school advantage purchasing card for Adam Bochamp for the nineteen twenty school year.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the school advantage purchasing card for Adam Bochamp, student attendant for nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of renewal of lease agreement with First National Bank of Sturgis for the LED lighting for the nineteen twenty school year.
This is the same lease agreement we just approved, it, uh, it's just the beginning of the new fiscal year, and so we need to go ahead and approve that so we can move forward.
Make a motion we renew the lease agreement with First National Bank of Sturgis.
Motion made by John, second by David, to, uh, renew the lease agreement with First National Bank of Sturgis for the LED lighting for the nineteen twenty school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of revision of the following policy, leave policy, three to seven.
Just D E C, that's the word?
D E C, oh, okay. These, oh, okay, so those are the, those are what the changes.
These.
There's almost copies of those changes.
So you think they have, that they're...
This, this will be a little better job showing you what they're changing, okay? We're just trying to clean up a few things so that it makes it a little more clear, and, um...
This one's already done, I'm not ready for some.
Yes. So. Sick leave did not change. We go to the, um... Personal leave. First of all, um, you always get stuck trying to make decisions on, uh, personal leave that doesn't qualify for personal leave, and then that becomes unpaid leave, and you have a lot of questions there. First one, D E C R one, just says that if what you're asking does not qualify for personal leave, you go to your principal. Your principal approves an unpaid leave, and if your principal approves it, then you take off, but you know that one one eightieth of your salary will be deducted from your paycheck. Bereavement leave? We've had some cases recently of, uh, pretty traumatic, uh, bereavement leave, and we just had a length of policy that says you get three days. So I found, uh, this from, uh, Broken Arrow Schools, and they said, in the event of the death of spouse, child, parent, or corresponding in-laws, or step relatives, you can take up to five days for that. In the event, the death of a sister, brother, grandparent, grandchild, or corresponding in-laws or step relatives, you can have three days. And in the event of death of an aunt or an uncle, or niece, or nephew, you can have one day. It just gives a little more clarity and gives us some, a little more leeway on that trying to... I'm sorry, I had, I had Leithy going seven different directions today. Everybody with me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's why I'm making all these changes. I was just thinking, I got a lot of people I thank for over in my family.
Me too.
Why?
Me too.
Yeah. Well, you, you get to, the way it's set up now, you get to a point that people have those, uh, use up all their personal days or not go to a funeral, and, uh, of, of an aunt or an uncle or something. And when you think about, uh, possibly losing, losing a spouse or a child, and having three days, and then go back to work in front of your classroom, that, that's a tough deal. Um, and then we've added to, D E C R three, we've added to the definition of, um... Personal business leave, and that is what it really is supposed to be. Valerie's here today, so she's part of the S E A. Uh, I'll tell all of you all that, um, this is a pretty strict interpretation, and there might be some room for negotiations after we get the policy adopted, uh, to make some changes. Uh, but I do think there's some things that we need to address in, uh, what personal business really is. So you can read, uh, what's it, what it's intended for. Things like loan closings, banking matters, that their hours are kind of set in standard, uh, attorneys, court appearances. Attending a school activity, uh, to support your students. Uh, what it's not intended for is, um, pleasure trips and vacations, seeking other employment, participating in political and social activities, and performing any service for compensation. That's not what school personal business is intended for. So, um... And then, uh, the other thing that we, currently we'd be, uh, I would recommend we add, and this gets... When you define personal business and everything, uh, you'd also like to see some emergency leave. So we've tightened up some areas in, that could be, uh, taken advantage of, or whatever, however you want to put it, but we're also giving some on some real need, because you hate to see a person... So many times, these things happen in multiples of two or three to the same person, and you think, wow, you know, I wish there was something else that we could do to help them out. And so I think this is a well-rounded recommendation to, uh, make some areas, uh, a little, a little more restrictive for absences, because it, it's important that we have our employees at work. Uh, but at the same time, it addresses some needs and, and some things that we can also, uh, be very beneficial for our employees as well.
This would be like, like a flood field or what?
Yes, yeah. A natural disaster, uh, an injured child that's not, you know, uh, whereas in the past, you'd have three personal days, if you don't have any sick days, you're just out of luck.
Does this mean that the board can add five days, if one where it says, allow emergency leave, if it's granted at the discretion of the board? However, not worked out, okay.
Yes.
So that would be a total of eight, or a total of nine?
Could, could be a total of eight.
Okay.
Yes.
So they did have something come up that bring it before we say, I don't know.
Yes. You could add it, but, yeah, it just, like I said, it, uh, in, in one way, we're being a little more restrictive, but in another way, we're really trying to accommodate the real needs.
Good, you're solid enough to make that, taking out some of the guests.
That's, that's the antenna.
I make a motion, we accept the leave policy for the nineteen twenty school year.
Revision.
Revision. My second.
Motion made by Kenny, second by David, to accept the provisions of the following policy for leave, uh, D E C, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. And Susie, yes.
We'll get you printed up and dated and everything, get you all the copy in your next month's, uh, board package, so you'll see the, the thing.
So teacher will be notified, meeting in y'all, going at a resume.
We're going through a red book.
So he can just blame you for all this?
But he'll, he'll, he'll act, he'll actually have a po, a copy of all this at negotiations, so.
Right. This time we move on to executive session. A proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to section three oh seventy of open E gang. Number one, discussion of resignation of Joey Odom, middle school social studies teacher, coach, effective May twenty-first, twenty nineteen, page seventy-three. Number two, discussion of resignation of Jamie Rising Hoover, middle school social, social studies teacher, effective May twenty-second, twenty nineteen, page seventy-four. Number three, discussion of resignation of Don Bryant, table clerk, child nutrition director, effective June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, page seventy-five. Number four, discussion to employ support personnel for the nineteen twenty school year, pages seventy-six through seventy-eight. Number five, discussion to employ agriculture, agriculture, education teacher for the nineteen twenty school year. Number six, discussion to employ middle school social studies teacher, coach, for the nineteen twenty school year. Number seven, discussion to employ middle school social studies teacher for the nineteen twenty school year. Number eight, discussion to employ high school math teacher for the nineteen twenty school year. Number nine, discussion to employ high school science leadership teacher for the nineteen twenty school year. Number ten, discussion to employ payroll child nutrition clerk for the nineteen twenty school year. Number eleven, discussion of other open positions and or resignations for the nineteen twenty school year. Number twelve, discussion of authorizing St. Princeton and Monty Guthrie to extend employment for any vacant positions for the nineteen twenty school year.
Make a motion we convene to executive session.
Motion made by John, second by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at seven forty-eight P M. John's sessions were, uh, David Huggins, uh, John Turntime, Jenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, my vote was taken. Monty Guthrie and Adam Bochamp, uh, were also present. Okay?
I make a motion, we accept the resignations of Joey Odom, Jamie Rising Hoover, and Don Bryant.
Motion made by John, second by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Joey Odom, Jamie Rising Hoover, and Don Bryant. Uh, John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ support personnel for nineteen twenty school as listed.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to employ support personnel for the nineteen twenty school, school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Cody Dawson, the agriculture education teacher for the 1920 school year. Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by John to employ Cody Dawson for agricultural teacher, education teacher for the 1920 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ Tyler Guthrie to fill the social studies teacher slash coach for the middle school for the 1920 school year. Second.
Question made by John, seconded by David to employ Tyler Guthrie for middle school social studies teacher and coach for the 1920 school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Hannah Hurst, the middle school social studies teacher for the 1920 school year.
Question made by Kenny, seconded, made, seconded by Jennifer to employ Hannah Hurst, middle school social, social studies teacher for the 1920 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we employ Caitlin Colwell, math teacher, high school math teacher, 1920 school year. Second.
Question made by David, seconded by John to employ Caitlin Colwell, high school math teacher for the 1920 school year. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we employ Jessica Morris for the high school science slash leadership, leadership teacher for the 1920 school year.
My second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny to employ Jessica Morris, high school science leadership teacher for the 1920 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we employ Melissa Pemberton to fill the payroll child nutrition clerk for the 1920 school year. Second.
Question made by John, seconded by David to employ Melissa Pemberton, payroll child nutrition clerk for the 1920 school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Susie, yes. Number 11, no action.
Make a motion to authorize superintendent to extend employment for any vacant positions for the 1920 school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John to authorize superintendent, the superintendent to extend employment for any vacant, vacant positions for the 1920 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any new business?
No new business. Make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
Question made at 8:53 PM, Jennifer Turner, John? Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.